Hey guys, we have a spare water.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Packer and I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto. And welcome and thank you for coming to tonight's forum for the candidates for the Palo Alto Unified School District Board for this November 8th election. The League of Women Voters is a broadly-based organization that encourages informed and involved participation of citizens in government like you through our voter service activities, of which this forum is one. These activities are funded by the League of Women Voters 501(c)(3) Education Fund through contributions from members and community donors. And we welcome your tax deductible donations to our education fund. Now while the League also influences public policy through education and advocacy, the League does not support or oppose political candidates or parties. And we hold that, this forum, in that spirit. And this is why the candidates' materials are outside. That's where all the political stuff happens. This is our nonpartisan, neutral arena where we can get information. So I want to thank our cosponsors for this event. That's Avenidas, Mid-Penn Media Center, the Mid Peninsula Chapter of the ACLU of Northern California, the Palo Alto branch of the AAUW, the Palo Alto Council of PTAs, Palo Alto Weekly and Palo Alto Online, and the Palo Alto Women's Club. And I want to also inform you that a forum for the candidates for city council that's being hosted by the League of Women Voters will be held on, I think it's Wednesday, October 5th, at Mitchell Park Community Center in the El Palo Alto Room at 7:00 PM. So I hope to see you there as well. And we're also holding several presentations of the pros and cons on the 17 state and two county ballot measures that are going to be on your ballot for this November election. And these events are listed in a flyer in the back of the room. I don't want to list them all now because you won't remember them anyway, but take the flyer and you'll see these events and come and, you know, come and listen so you can be informed about the ballot measures. The first one is this Sunday afternoon at 3:00 PM at Beth Arm on Restadaro Road. Now you may have noticed that this forum is being taped by Mid-Penn Media Center. And on this whiteboard here is the, are the, the information you need to, if you're at home now, you can watch it there. If you're watching it now, you already know that. But if you want, if you want to watch it later, because it'll, it'll be re-aired at various times and that will be posted on the, the Mid-Penn website. And it's also going to be YouTube and there's information there on the whiteboard. The other thing I want to tell you is when we get into the election season more, you'll get more information from a League website that's called Voter's Edge. And right now, there isn't any information up there on the city council or school board because they haven't gotten everything they need from the register of voters yet. But it'll be up there soon. And that's where you go and you put in your zip code and you find out everything you need to know about voting. It's a great resource. And our other great resource is of course, our own website, LWVPaloAlto.org. So we also have, prepared for this election, a voter's guide that tells you a lot of election information and short summaries of the ballot measures. And these are free and they're on the back table there for you to pick up. What I also wanted to tell you about, oh yes, we have other information. We have our newsletter and, you know, you're welcome to join the League. Also, you can do that online. I want now also, before I move this over to Sigrid, who's our moderator, I'm not Sigrid, it says Sigrid there, I'm Bonnie. But I want to thank Jeannie Lithcott, where are you, Jeannie? She's our voter services queen. She puts this all together. The timers, and the timers are very important, candidates, are Ellen Forbes and Veronica Tinscher. You were handed little cards with lines on them for you to write your questions. And these, and these will be collected by Barb Spring, Sally Ann Rice, is Sally Ann Rice here? No? Or maybe Penny's doing it. Are you doing it? Penny Elson and Liz Jensen will be collecting the cards. So when you have, when you've written your question, just pass them to the end of the aisle and they'll pick it up. And these cards will then come to our question sorters, who will organize them by category and then use those questions to ask the candidates at that time in the event. I want to thank Heidi Stein as well for being our usher, or our question sorters, or Carol Stevens and Trina Leverchak, so I want to thank them. Want to thank PTA Council, this is President Audrey Gold. I also want to say, if there's anybody here who needs Spanish translation, PTA Council has provided a translator. Christina Rodriguez is in the back of the room. So if you need that, that assistance, please let Christina know. And want to thank PAUSD for the use of this room. And of course, a big thank you to Mid-Penn Media Center for bringing this to the public so there can be a wider audience. And now, I'll turn it over to Sigrid, who's our moderator.
Note to self, take a sip of water before you get on camera. Good evening. Thank you, Bonnie. Welcome, I'm delighted to be here. Our forum this evening provides an opportunity for you to hear from and ask questions of the candidates running for the Palo Alto Board of Education. Our formal portion of the evening, the formal questions will end about 8:30. And the room is available until 9 o'clock so you can have informal chats with all the candidates. The candidates have agreed to the following ground rules. There will be no substitutes or stand-ins. Check, they're all here. Candidate responses will pertain to the question at hand and I will enforce that. The moderator will enforce time limits. Be warned, candidates will not interrupt each other. Now I had things about timekeepers, question collectors, question screeners, but Bonnie has covered all that, so we're ahead. We do ask that there's no applause or demonstrations of support or opposition during this forum. At the end of the forum, we'll thank everyone with our applause. The format for the evening will be opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes. And that's going to be given in order of numbers drawn a few minutes ago. Then we'll spend some time on questions from the audience. Please get your questions in now because I'll need them pretty soon. And closing statements will be one and a half minutes per candidate and that'll be in reverse order from the opening statements. Now I'd like to introduce our candidates who are here tonight. There's Jennifer DeBrienza, Heidi Emberling, Jay Cabrera, Todd Collins, and Melissa Baten-Caswell. All right. Right on time. All right. According to the lots drawn earlier, Ms. Emberling, you may go with your opening statement.
Okay. Thank you, Sigrid. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. Buenas tardes to those of you who are Spanish speakers. It's, it's been a great honor and a tremendous responsibility to serve this district for the past four years as your elected school board representative and current president of the board. I do this work because I believe that my kids and all the kids in our community deserve a high-quality educational experience that only happens when parents get involved and stay involved in our local public schools. I'm a parent in this district. I have a son, Jordy, who's in 10th grade at Gunn High School. And I have a daughter, Sarah, who's in 8th grade at Termon Middle School. Education is not just my passion, it's my profession too. For the past 11 years, I've worked at Parents Place here in Palo Alto, working with families and teachers of young children aged birth through 10. I was also born and raised in California and I'm a product of our public schools from kindergarten through graduate school. I went to UC Santa Cruz undergrad, UC Berkeley graduate, and San Francisco State University for my master's in education, emphasis in early childhood education. When our son was about to enter kindergarten, we looked all up and down the peninsula and for the best place for him to start school. And we did what many people do, we moved to Palo Alto for its excellent schools. So I've been happy to be here ever since. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Emberling. Next is Ms. Caswell.
Hi, I'm Melissa Baten-Caswell. I'm a PAUSD trustee and I've been board president twice. My husband and I have lived in Palo Alto since 1990. And we have had children in the Palo Alto schools for all of the last 16 years. This year, PAUSD was rated the best district, the best school district in the state of California. That doesn't just happen. It happens because of stewardship. Over my nine years on the board, I have been passionate about allocating resources to ensure that each and every student gets a top-quality education. I've promoted all students' full academic and social development and encouraged students to be excited about learning. And championed policies to build student skills for success in a changing world. As your trustee, I've listened to thousands of students and parents and teachers across the district. And my experience has given me deep understanding of each school. When crisis came, I was an active listener. I supported changes to counseling, student connectedness, and wellness programs. And I encouraged our community and schools to work together on behalf of our students. Before joining our board, I was a leading community volunteer in roles that included president of the district-wide PTA council. I have an AB and MBA from Dartmouth College and over 16 years of leadership roles in finance, management, and strategic planning. We have a great district, but we can't sit on our laurels. We have the responsibility to provide continual improvement. People move here for our schools and many stretch to live here. Over the next four years, we will need to support the academic and social emotional health of every child while addressing the continuing challenge of a growing teacher shortage. To do this well, it will be more important than ever for our community to stand together and protect the excellence that we have worked so hard to create. I look forward to being your elected representative to carry on this profoundly important work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caswell. Mr. Cabrera?
Hello, everyone. My name is Jay Blas Jacob Cabrera. I'm actually a Gunn High School graduate and I was born in Sanford Hospital and grew up here in Palo Alto. And went to UC Santa Cruz for college and from ring back and been here for a few years. And, you know, the most important thing I think to understand about my campaign is I think it's so important to have a diverse perspective and viewpoint. And I feel like I give that here in these discussions as well as I would on the board. In the context of what I believe, I feel that to have a true governance that is for the people, of the people, by the people, to the people, we need normal, everyday people running for office and getting involved in our governance systems. And so I encourage, you know, everyone to run for office, especially more diversity, et cetera, et cetera. I feel like, you know, I am an outsider, I am bringing a different perspective. But if I challenge people to really think about, you know, we have three candidates that you can vote in, you know, to consider that maybe it's not just the best candidate, but electing the best board and having, you know, a diversity of viewpoints and opinions on the board could be very effective for our students, especially someone who might be more able to connect with students. So in that, with that said, I want to address one issue that is very rarely addressed, which is the money. Right? And, you know, I'm dedicated to running a small contribution campaign, you know, collecting donations of under $100, about $50. It's very difficult, it's a huge mountain to climb, the probability that I'm going to win is low. But it's so important to get these viewpoints out there and rethink our election system, especially at the school board level. You know, Todd has put $10,000 of his own money into elections and that's totally normal. I mean, this is like, people do that in elections. You know, we, Ken, for example, he won the last election, Ken Dobber, he spent almost $30,000, right? And there was over $100,000 spent on our school board elections. I personally feel like it's just too much money. We need to get money out of the elections, especially our school board elections. Additionally, we have the issue of the incumbents. When there's an incumbent election, it's very difficult to get, you know, the new people involved. But thank you so much, I'm excited to be here and we'll talk more.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza?
Thank you. Good evening, thank you all for coming tonight. I have been a parent in the district for seven years and I've got 13 years to go. My youngest just started kindergarten last month. I've been an educator for 25 years. And this school district serves many students very well. But we have the opportunity to, to be a lighthouse district, to really serve all children. We have a responsibility to make sure that our students are healthy, engaged, and prepared for the future. But we have the opportunity to actually do that. The board considers issues that are complex and difficult and I appreciate the work that they do. I believe these decisions will be better informed with an educator on the board. In my 25 years in and around classrooms and my PhD from Stanford in mathematics education, my knowledge about classrooms, about research, about data, about systems, will benefit all kids in the district. My experience extends beyond the classroom, although I was a classroom teacher for a number of years. My work for the past 15 years in districts has, I've done a lot of work supporting districts as they go through change. And change is hard. It's a difficult thing. There are a lot of stakeholders, there are differing priorities. But I've become a pragmatist since I left the classroom. When I left the classroom, I was still an idealist, I think. But I think it's, I've found that it's necessary to find common ground and to grow from there. A great idea doesn't serve kids well if it's not implemented well and you don't have buy-in. So the issues before the board over time will change. But what will not change is my commitment to listening, using evidence to guide decisions, and finding common ground among all of our stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. Thank you, Sigrid, and thank you to the League, of which I am a member, by the way. I've lived in Palo Alto for 12 years. I lived in Boston for 25 years before that. I have three children, all of whom attended Palo Alto schools. Two are now in college and one is still at home. My son has special needs. As you, as I think you'll hear tonight, I have goals that I think we all share and probably everyone in this room shares. Maintain high student achievement, both for our own kids individually and for every kid in the system. Continue to address minority achievement gap, which we've really started to focus on, I think, in the last two years. Continue to address social and emotional well-being and reduce student stress. Continue to nurture innovation and provide choices and make them more widely available. Maintain reasonable class sizes and teacher load. But to do any of these things at the level that we aspire to, we need to get and keep our budget under control. As many people have heard, the board made some mistakes and created a large structural deficit, which puts at risk the things we value most about our schools, class sizes, electives, ability to support key programs. A few years ago, I helped address a similar problem with our bond program. We'd made a mistake and we were headed down the wrong track and I was able to recognize the problem, get other people involved, educate the board and staff, and change our direction. In the end, almost everybody agreed and that effort saved our taxpayers over $850 million and protected our ability to upgrade our schools with future bonds. So I want to bring that same independent thinking and collaborative, constructive problem solving to our budget issues and frankly, to all the issues we face. Because as Jennifer said, the issues we're going to face are going to change over time. They always do. But my approach and values will not. Kids will always come first, quality teachers will be a close second. And I'll bring a spirit of constructive, data-driven problem solving to every issue with candor and transparency in everything I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to go to questions from the audience. I just want to urge you again, get them in, I got to see them. The first question has to do with delaning. There's a trend in the high schools to delane academic classes. What's your opinion on delaning? And if elected, what would you do to ensure all students receive appropriate challenge and support? For this round, Ms. Caswell, you're first.
How much time do I have?
One minute.
Okay. I, I think what's most important is that every student has the support that they need in the classroom. And from what I've seen at the high school level and at the secondary level just in general, we do need to have teachers focused on the kids' needs. It's very hard to do that when you have a wide diversity in the classroom. And so I have not been a proponent of delaning at our high schools. It seems to me that we need to make sure that the kids that are struggling are getting the supports and scaffolding that they need. And are not inhibited from speaking up in the classroom because there's students in the classroom who are way more advanced than they are. It also is important that the kids that are advanced have the opportunity to reach their potential and be engaged and challenged at the right level. And we want to make sure that the students in the middle are also appropriately challenged.
Thank you. Ms. Emberling?
Yes, so every student needs to be supported in the classroom. It's, it's difficult to differentiate teaching. You have 20, 25 students in your class and to be able to figure out how to support the struggling students and challenge the advanced students has been challenging. Teachers certainly have put in many different efforts towards this goal. And I think they want to try different ways of approaching teaching and learning in the classroom. Teachers came to us this year on the board, actually, to try a pilot delaning program of Algebra I and 1A at Gunn High School, which the board approved as a pilot for us to see, let's do a baseline survey at the beginning, let's do baseline, let's do mid, mid semester testing, and then let's see how students are doing in a delaning class. So I think the innovation that teachers want to provide to our students starts with a pilot and then gets moved throughout the district if it's shown to be successful.
Thank you. Mr. Cabrera?
Great. Yeah, I feel like this question's a little more applicable to high school programs. I mean, we're never going to completely be able to delane every single class. I mean, certain students who are taking different levels of math and science need to continue on that trajectory. I feel like the, the key components are opportunities, making sure that every student and every unique individual has the opportunity to grow and advance to their highest potential. And I'm very huge proponent, for example, in course systems and my experience in England, they had core classes where they really, you know, made shows very, very, you know, broad interaction between all the students and then you had more specialty classes. But when you have a student who excels, you know, I think it's important to encourage that student to come back into, with their peers and help teach their peers instead of just completely, you know, dividing and removing all of the excelling students from students that could use more help and having more interaction. I think that helps, it's good.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Thanks. So, research tells us that nearly all public schools in the US have used lanes. The last time I looked, I think it was about 98% of them, public high schools. So it seems likely that it would be appropriate for us too. That said, proposals have come forward, as Ms. Emberling said, for pilots that could be tried, one at Gunn and one at Paly. And both in introductory courses. Part of the teacher's job is to bring new methods and approaches to improve teaching and learning. And so I think it's important to give them room to see what they can accomplish. It doesn't seem to, we're not talking about the elimination of all academic lanes here. We're not talking about taking BC calculus students and putting them in with Algebra I. We're talking about combining two very similar courses and seeing how it goes. And I think our teachers should have the ability to do that kind of experiment and we can then evaluate it and see how to move forward.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza?
Thank you. So when it comes to delaning and detracking, there's conflicting research on what works. And there is general consensus that delaning can work well under certain circumstances. And one of the most important parts, one of the most important aspects of that is teacher buy-in, teacher willingness, and teacher training in how to do it well. I would not, I would not advocate that decision coming down from the board. If teachers came and wanted to try something, I would certainly want to support them piloting something. But I think that even in those situations, it requires professional development and support in how to do it effectively and how to meet a wide range of student needs. So I am not a proponent of, of delaning in general, but certainly support teacher innovation to try it.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions here and I'm going to blend into one. Innovation is a buzzword in this election. Can each candidate please elaborate on his or her position as it regards innovation? Specific ideas for innovating that focuses on creating more energy, learning environments for our children, and balancing that with budget constraints? Easy one. Ms. Emberling, you're first.
All right. If you visit any of our secondary schools today, you will see engaging personalized choices for students. We have innovations in coursework, we have new pathways programs, we have a social justice pathway at Paly, we have an engineering pathway at Gunn. We have added an advanced authentic research program for juniors and seniors to go in-depth for a year with an outside mentor and leave school with a capstone project that they can be proud of. We have a new child development program, which is near and dear to my heart, where high school students partner with our youngest students in preschool and spend two days with the preschoolers and one day back at the high school. with the preschoolers and one day back at the high school. So we, we certainly have innovation throughout our district. And I'm running low on time, so I'm going to end there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cabrera?
Well, I think this is a good time to share a little of my vision, which is basically making our high schools cultural epicenters of our communities. I feel like some of the innovative ideas that I have are more of a societal, you know, community coming together. For example, we need to, you know, really engage our students in civic engagement. I want to actually see the voting age come down to 15 and have three years of direct civic engagement for all of our students and all of our community members. And, you know, we can do that at the local level easily without, you know, having to go to the state. From there, I feel like we need to get computer programming, computer coding specifically taught as a language from third grade on. Like, we need to get our students ready for the, the evolution of our entire society. It's very, very important. And then I'm very, very excited about just making our high schools a little bit more university-like, you know, and in more interactions with Stanford University. And I'm also very interested in potentially doing more, like, you know, mock opportunities for life skills. And I don't have time to go into that, but basically, you know, students would have the opportunity to make a mock business, you know, and learn about innovation.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, you're next.
Thank you. So innovation's critical for our success, but it shouldn't come from the Board. If the community looks to the Board to provide innovative ideas, I think it's likely that we'll fail. We have over 1,000 certificated educators that work in our district. That's the source of innovative ideas. The Board's job is really to help support, to develop a process or help, help the management develop a process to nurture those ideas and then get the resources to deliver them and, and roll them out as they're successful. One thing that I think the Board could helpfully do is help them, help guide management to develop a process to assess the, the inventory of innovative ideas that we already have and manage it as a process going forward. Right now, innovation in the district is pretty much a random activity. It's done at a lot of classrooms, at a lot of levels. We do have a lot of innovation, way more than I think most people know. But we need to get a handle on what there is and how, and how we're allocating our resources across it so we can put money and resources behind the innovations that we want to develop.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza?
Thank you. So I think we, we all agree that innovation is important. We have to continue to innovate. The, the world that our, that our children are going off onto is rapidly changing. Not only is it different now than when most of us were in school, but it's continuing to change. And by the time they get out into the world, it's going to be different still. The US Department of Labor came out with a study two years ago that said that 65% of all of the children that are in school now will eventually work in jobs that don't exist yet. So we're no longer preparing students for specific jobs. We're preparing them to be thinkers and learners and innovators. So they need to be comfortable with the unknown. They need to be comfortable mucking around and things and making mistakes and trying stuff out in iterating and reiterating. So we need to provide those opportunities for, for students. And as everyone said, some of those programs exist already. They should largely come from the teachers. We need to give them the opportunity to, to innovate and to try new things. Max was hired, the superintendent, was hired several years ago under the guise of innovation. And in some ways, the Board has supported that, and in other ways, they've gotten in his way. And I think we need to let them go.
Thank you. Ms. Caswell?
Yeah, I think there's been an enormous amount of pilot innovation since I became a Board member, not just at the high schools, but also at the middle schools and at the elementary schools as well. You know, my, many people don't realize how much is going on at the middle schools here, for example. We have classes, you can make a creature and not realize that while you're making a creature, you're learning the math around designing a creature, you're learning the creative writing about, explaining what the creature can do. And guess what? Creating a creature sounds like a great class. We, one way that we came up with a lot of the innovation that we've had in the last couple of years has been to give the teachers extra time to work on their innovative ideas. The next step needs to be to take an accounting of how those ideas have gone going forward. We have classes, we have pathways, we have whole programs, and we need to take an accounting on that and figure out which things to go forward with. One of the things that has been huge has been the change in, okay. Ask me another question.
I will.
It's been huge.
It's been huge.
For like 15 more seconds.
Okay, the next question has to do with teacher shortages. How will each of you address the teacher shortage, more specifically, the growing inability of teachers and staff to afford living within a commutable distance? And Mr. Cabrera, you're first for this one.
Um, you know, I think it's a pretty easy answer, but at the same time, it's a very difficult budgetary issue. The answer is that the cost of living has to be on the negotiation table, and currently the cost of living in our area is literally over $100,000 going to $150,000 plus. And so if we're not, you know, negotiating at that type of level, we're not, you know, being realistic, right? If that involves, you know, additional budgetary, you know, increases, I'm a huge proponent that education should be our top budgetary, you know, funding. And, you know, we should continue to go to our communities and encourage our communities to fund education as well as pressure the state. So I think that's really the main thing that I would need to say in regards to the specifics of that question.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
I have two-part answer. One, the first is, what we can't do is what we've done, which is continue to give all the money that we have available to the staff in the form of raises. That's what's gotten us in our current budget structural deficit. And it's just an unsustainable path because the cost of living, particularly the cost of rent, is accelerating faster than our revenue. So we, we can't go down that path. We have to figure out a different way. One way that I think would be very helpful is I have very specific proposals around how to develop teacher housing. Not, not actually with the district as a landlord, as, as you suggested last time.
I didn't suggest.
Oh.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you. I was prepared to stop, anyway. Not, not with the district as a landlord, but with a third, with a third-party landlord managing housing on district-owned land, which would cost taxpayers no money at all, would actually generate housing for teachers in our community, which I think has tremendous collateral benefits, as well as giving us an edge in recruiting the kind of high-quality teachers that we really want to have in our district. There we go.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza?
Thank you. I think the, the only choice, the only chance we have at retaining the best teachers is to make this the most desirable district to work in. So yes, we have to stay competitive with salaries, and everyone's talked about how challenging that is, given the cost of living around here. But I think we need to talk to the teachers, and I think we need to find out what makes them want to stay. I know that some of the things that make them want to stay is if they feel respected and listened to and valued, if they're getting high-quality professional development, if we continue to give them opportunities to develop as educators and as professionals. And maybe it's housing, maybe it's childcare, maybe it's, there's all kinds of things that it might be, but I think we need to speak with the teachers about the kinds of things that will make this an attractive place to stay.
Thank you. Ms. Caswell?
Yeah, I think this, we have to make teachers want to have their careers here. And excellent teachers, when we hire them, we should be investing in them in a way where we want them to be with us for the rest of their career. So how do we do that? It used to be that when teachers came to PAUSD, we'd have hundreds of teachers looking for one spot, and we could have whatever choice we wanted, and it made us sort of lightweight on the other things. We don't have that opportunity anymore, and I would like to make sure that not only are we paying in the top five, which we've been doing since I was on the Board, so that we can, we are competitive and can get the best teachers, but also we're helping develop their careers. We're asking them what career aspirations they have along the way, rather than waiting for teachers to come to us and ask us. We're making sure that they're getting the professional development they need to do the different steps that we expect them to do, that we give them the time to do the innovation that they are interested in doing, and that we support them when they have ideas. I think we also have to look at creative ways to help, help them afford living here.
Thank you. Ms. Emberling?
I'm committed to investing in high-quality teaching and learning for every student in our district, and that means continuing to support our most effective resource, and that's the classroom teacher. We have to recruit and retain the best teachers, mentor, evaluate, and support them while they're here in our district. There is a national teacher shortage going on in, in our state and in the nation, and it's so difficult to move here to Palo Alto because of the prohibitive cost of housing. We need to partner with the city and our regional neighbors in order to remain this destination district, and that means competitive compensation as well. My first year on the Board, we voted to set aside $5 million in a professional development fund. This fund, we hired a Director of Professional Development, Dr. Kelly Bickel, and we have invested in our teachers' learning, not only just in bringing people here to give a one-time professional development, but in job embedding it as well.
Thank you. Our next question has to do with roles and responsibilities. Could you describe your beliefs and understanding of the roles and responsibilities of staff versus Board versus community members, and how you view your role as a Board member? Mr. Collins, you're first for this question.
Great, thank you. The Board does four critical things. First, it hires, has to hire the superintendent and replace them if necessary. Second, it sets goals and priorities for the district being responsive to the community. Third, it secures the resources to do what we set out to do. That means parcel taxes, bonds, and funding beyond the property tax that we get via the county. And finally, it's provide oversight, guidance, and accountability to make sure things are done right. One of my, one of the core tenets of my campaign are that we need to focus on the most important things because if we try to do too much, we'll inevitably fail. I think the Board really needs to focus on hiring the right superintendent, establishing a small set of high-priority goals for the district, and then focusing on managing the budget, on, on setting a budget and managing the budget and managing the performance of the senior staff. I think if the Board does that well, everything else will come out okay.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza?
Thank you. I think that there are many different kinds of Boards. There are corporate Boards, there are governance Boards. And I think one of the things that is special about a school district is a school Board, is that we're serving students. We're serving a community, and that makes it, I think, a unique situation. Our job, as Mr. Collins said, is to hire a superintendent and set the goals. And I think from there, we need to keep in mind that the, the, the reason we're here is for the students. And when we work collaboratively between the superintendent and the Board, the kids benefit. So the Board's role is to represent the community. We're, the, the Board is elected by the community. And we need to represent the parents and the community as a whole to make sure that those priorities are, are represented in the school district. But I think we need, we, all the kids are served better when we work with the superintendent rather than acting as a watchdog.
Thank you. Ms. Caswell?
Yeah, so the Board's role is an oversight role. And the Board are elected, and they're laypeople. I mean, we're people from the community, and we're supposed to represent the community's needs and make sure that the community's funds, which are our tax dollars, are used effectively. We do need to hire the superintendent, and if necessary, replace the superintendent. We do need to have fiscal oversight, but we don't manage the budget day-to-day. That's not, we actually shouldn't be doing micromanaging of anything in the district. We should be doing governance and oversight. What we should be doing, though, is listening to our constituents. We're elected by our constituents, and this has been a big part of my role in the last nine years, is to make sure that every voice is heard, not just the loudest voice. And we have a very, very wide-ranging community, and so that means that there's a lot of different voices and a lot of different things to balance. And that's one of the things about having a five-person Board, is you get to hear a lot of different voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Emberling?
All right. I don't want to repeat what everyone else has said here. Public schools are reflections of the community in which they operate, and our job is to represent you and your public, the public has to be participants in helping to develop the strategic plan and vision. In addition, we need, we need involvement by all stakeholders. So one of the ideas that I'd like to move forward with is to create a parent advisory group. Other districts that I've talked to have this, that supports our strategic plan goals and our LCAP goals. This would be a standing committee of people with representatives from all the diverse advocacy groups that exist in our community: PTA and Pi and English Language Learners, special need groups, parent advocates for student success. This would be a parent, a standing committee that would come together and help us achieve our strategic plan goals, so it's one idea.
Thank you. Mr. Cabrera?
Great, yeah. So I, I feel like we definitely hit some administrative components of this, which I think it's a little bit heavy. And, you know, you alluded to the importance of getting into our communities and being a representative of communities, and I really feel like that is the key to what the Board needs to be doing. We want to empower our staff to be the administrators, and the focus that I want to put into it is empowering our community members and being the voice of the community. For me, I feel like the way to have an innovative, you know, school district is to have an innovative Board. And what I see as the Board's role is to oversee the processes and policies of how the Board and the school district function on a whole. So what I want to see is, I want to see processes that involve participatory budgeting, where the entire community gets involved with the budgeting process. I want to see participatory governance structures where we're utilizing 21st century technology. I mean, we are in 2016 where every single Board decision is online, where people in the entire community can vote on them and have direct feedback in real time. So in that context, I'm a big advocate of direct democracy, of participatory democracy, and getting people engaged directly with the Board.
Thank you. The next question. What is your vision for the district at the Coverly site? For this one, Ms. DeBrienza, you'll go first.
I knew you were going to come to me first. So the Coverly site is, is a, is something that we need all parties in the community to weigh in on. The, the school district has a big say in it, the city also has a stake in it, and the community. It serves the community in so many ways. There's so many organizations that currently use Coverly. I think that we have an opportunity to make it a, a community center that, that offers everything that, that Palo Alto has to offer, where we still have it as a place where if we need it for growing enrollment in the future, it can be a place where a school can be. But we have to reserve, we have to preserve our fields and the, and the rooms for activities to occur. In 2013, there was a Coverly committee that made some recommendations, and I think it is time that we look at those recommendations and take action on Coverly because it's sort of been sitting there for a while without us taking advantage of it.
Thank you. Ms. Caswell?
Well, the good news is we're finally undergoing a process for joint planning with the city on Coverly. This is a terrific community asset, and we should use it that way, but we need to get together and we need to lay on the table what our needs are and what the city's needs are. I think part of the problem we've had is that we haven't come clean with what we would like to do with the site and what we need. I think that the city needs a community center down in South Palo Alto, but they need to explain to us what that includes, what are the pieces to that. You know, honestly, I think this district office doesn't serve us very well in the school district right now. There's not enough parking, there's all these portables being put in place for all the different pieces. We could use this space as part of Palo Alto High School. We could use this for innovative programs. I'd like to move the district office down to Coverly. I think that there is some need in the future, there'll probably be a need in the future for some additional educational space. I'd like our joint plan, our joint master plan, to be flex enough, flexible enough for us to do that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Emberling?
Coverly, so Coverly is the last large parcel of land, right, that's available in our community. And we need to partner with the city, as we are doing, to make that a joint-use facility of some sort. Now, what does that look like? Well, we did have this community committee that worked very hard on coming up with some possibilities, and now our superintendent and our city manager are, have an RFP out, a request for proposals, for an architect to help envision what that site will look like. And so that will be done this year, and then we'll move forward with sort of looking at the different pieces. But we already have two joint-use large parcels of land already in our community. We have Rinconada and Lucy Stern and Walter Hayes Elementary all together. We have Mitchell Park, Fair Meadow, JLS Hoover, and the new library together. So we have done this in the past, and we can do it again for Coverly.
Thank you. Mr. Cabrera?
Yeah, I feel like Coverly is the perfect place to have, be innovative, to do more intergenerational, you know, educational, and really bring, you know, cultural engagement to a forefront in our community. So us, obviously, we could do multi-use, we can do, you know, intermix it with the existing elementary schools and middle schools that are in the area. And I feel like having a mixed use really helps in that if you have, you know, a certain demographic. demographic, like your elementary school or elementary kids or your middle school kids, where, you know, one decade, one is higher and the other decade, the other is higher, mixed use can kind of easier, easier to, you know, manage it to make sure that you have an even classroom distribution. I would love also to see that become a potential, you know, adult education and an extension of even, you know, what's going on with the community colleges, and potentially, maybe we could even find a little nook nearby for some, you know, faculty housing, but, you know, it might be a little tight there, but we can see what we can do.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
The goal has to be to secure the benefits of Coverly for the community. As Ms. Emberling said, it's a substantial parcel, and it's wildly underutilized. The good news is that, given our declining enrollment and the enrollment projections, it seems very unlikely to me that the district will want to place its school at Coverly anytime soon, certainly not in the next 10 years and probably not in the next 20. On the other hand, it's impossible to forecast what the need will be past that time. So we need to live for the present and position for the future. And I think that means allow the city and others to make better use of Coverly today. I think moving the district office to Coverly is a good idea and repurposing this space for innovative satellite campus. And I think allowing the city to build some kind of multipurpose center there would be a big boon to the community and I think would be adequate for the school district.
Thank you. The next question has to do with student stress. While our high schools promote academic excellence, the students are frequently stressed by the academic pressures. How can we reduce student stress while promoting achievement and love of learning? And Ms. Caswell, you're first for this?
Well, you know, I went and visited a class at Paly two weeks ago, and the teacher started with two minutes of meditation. And at the end of that two minutes, he held up Time Magazine, and he said, "This is the cover of Time Magazine right now, we're going to do this at the school, across the school." And actually, if you go into both of our high schools now, this has become a start of class for many, many classes. And you may laugh about this, but we used to do that when I was in middle school, when I was growing up. And I ran into a friend the other day and said, "Hey, remember we used to lie down on the floor and have to relax and meditate?" He said, "Yeah, I do that every day in my office." He's a serial CEO. So we need to start putting these programs that we're doing out to the public so that people understand what we're doing in at the high schools and they can reinforce them. We've put wellness centers into both of our high schools. They're places you can go and have a cup of tea, but also talk to somebody if you have something to talk about. First three weeks at Paly, 300 students came into the wellness center. Can tell you more. Come talk to me afterwards.
Thank you. Ms. Emberling?
Sure. Building on the wellness centers of each high school, we've also moved to block scheduling at Gunn High School, which means that those students do not have seven classes every day and homework every night in all seven classes. Now the classes are spread out in larger blocks in the same way that Paly's had for many years. And so this has really eased the stress in terms of how much homework there is per night. We're also looking at moving to stronger teacher advisory guidance models. Also at Gunn, we're starting a new Titan Connect program in ninth grade, and that will develop as those students move through the high school until we have it in all four years. This decreases the ratio between students and teacher advisors. From right now, it's one in 250 at Gunn to one in 25 in terms of a ratio. So that's increasing positive connections across the site, and we'll help with those efforts. Thank you. Talk to me after.
Thank you. Mr. Cabrera?
So, yeah, I mean, this for me is one of the issue of our time, you know, in our society. I mean, you know, we need more time for this issue, more questions, and, you know, students are, you know, falling through the cracks, and it's very serious and people need to address it. I mean, one minor component is less homework. I think that it's really important to, you know, improve Schoology so it's, you know, mixing between all the classes, you know how much homework the students are getting throughout all of their classes. And then also, you know, when I remember when I was in school, there would be nights where you literally didn't have homework, and now it's like, you know, your homework load every night, right? So the issue here, I think, is beyond the school board and it's beyond, you know, this district. The issue is a societal issue, and the societal pressures, we're really putting like huge, huge pressures on these kids, and I feel like we need to be involved in the forefront of the smartest minds in California in the world and fund, you know, a really expertise group of people and support a much more interdisciplinary panel that can really figure out some answers for our kids.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
I think we've actually made some progress in stress. My oldest graduated from Gunn in 2012, and it was very stressful when she was there. My youngest graduated, my middle graduated three years later, and it was already less stressful, and I think they've gotten stressed more under control since then. So I think we've made some progress. But there are a couple of things that we absolutely need to do. The most important is to actually enforce the homework policy that we spent years developing. I think it's a disappointment that the board spent several years working with community members, developing a detailed homework policy, and then has made no effort to actually enforce implementation of it or actually be sure that it is implemented. I hear it from parents all the time, all over the district, that they're either not aware of the homework policy or they think it's implemented in a very different way in their school than it is elsewhere. The other is to have a class-size policy. Smaller classes equals more connection with adults, more connections with adults equals less stress. So a class-size policy is a critical component to managing stress in the schools.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza?
Thank you. I think that the district has done a lot to reduce stress, and I think in the parents that I've talked to in the past several months have talked a lot about a very manageable homework load, about them seeing a lot more use of Schoology, which has let families and kids keep track of their homework loads and their testing and whatnot. Also, the year-end evaluations that students are asked to do provide another data point for teachers to see how, the feedback that they're getting about the homework loads they're giving and the tests they're giving, and for principals and instructional supervisors to look across areas and across schools. So I think that's great. The wellness centers, I hope, are helping. It sounds like they have been very well received this year. I also want us to remember that stress in and of itself, some stress, is not bad. It's good for our kids to learn to deal with some stress. It's when they're in distress that we really worry. And I think the more that we get towards this 21st century learning, the less kids are doing school and the more kids are actually learning, and that's going to really help them with the stress.
Thank you. The next question is budget-related. What percentage of the district budget is spent on administrators versus teachers? And would you change that? Ms. Emberling, you're first.
So I think it's now close to 80% of our budget is spent on our teachers. So almost everything that comes in goes to our teachers. I know there's been a lot of conversations about that in terms of managing and analyzing the budget shortfall that came in. Just to put that in perspective, we do have a $230 million budget, and the budget shortfall that we're coping with right now is about $4 million. So we are putting mitigations in place to deal with that. I think, as we've all mentioned, the teacher is the most effective resource in the classroom, and so it makes sense that the majority of our budget is going towards that. The more we work on class size reduction, right, the more money goes into teachers and creating smaller class sizes. So that's a priority for me as well.
Thank you. Mr. Cabrera?
Yeah, you know, I guess I'll just say that, you know, if 80% of our expenses are going to the teachers and we have, you know, 5%, 10% of reserves, I mean, there's not a lot left there, and there's other expenses as well. I mean, I feel in general, you know, we can be putting more energy and money into our students, you know, and that we can be, you know, reducing somewhat of the reserve amounts in our budget. I feel like the taxpayers put this money into our schools and then we just put them aside. And really, a reserve budget is an administrative budget, you know, 5%, 10% of the reserve budgets is increasing our admin. But let's just stop there.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
It's important to start with, we're in a structural deficit where our expenses are sustainably higher than our revenue. That's a bad thing. A large part of that is because we have added substantial expense away from the classrooms in the last four years. Approximately $13 million in non-teacher expenses have been added in the last four years, and that doesn't count raises, that's just new positions and new programs. Some of that is important, a lot of it is just nice to have. We have the opportunity to improve operations and work smarter. We have several areas have been pointed out, including HR, including our payroll system, including our PR department. The most telling example, I think, is our recently added full-time communications officer, who's paid over $125,000 in salary and benefits. And with our current shortfall, that's being funded out of reserves. I think there's a real good opportunity to trim our administrative cost and put our money in the classroom.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza?
Thank you. So as I've known to say, budgets are moral documents. Budgets reflect what our priorities are, and it should, paying teachers should be the biggest ticket item that we have in our budget. And it is, as it should be. When it comes to administrators, when you look at site-based administrators, our instructional leaders, our principals, they are probably the most important person at the site. They are the ones that create the culture, they are the ones that set the expectations for instruction in the classrooms, and that, there's very little more important than that. We have a deficit right now of several million dollars. Tax revenues came in lower than expected, about 3% lower, and we've got a budget shortfall to make up, and it is a structural deficit. My two main concerns are, why did it happen? And what structures can we put in place to make sure it doesn't happen again? And what are we going to cut and how? And I think we all agree that we need to keep those cuts away from the classroom. And right now, both of those questions are being dealt with by the board and by the central office to make sure those systems are in place for the future.
Thank you. Ms. Caswell?
So in 2009, when we cut $7 million out of the budget structural money, what we did is tried to keep as far away from the classroom as possible. So that meant that administration was cut quite dramatically. And if you compared, well, we had an administration for the size of our district to other districts like ours or other organizations, it actually was quite slim. In the last four years, we've added some back. However, if we're going to make cuts again, we are going to, because of our values, make sure that they are as far away from the classroom as possible. That being said, I think we can help our administration by going through and re-looking at our systems and putting some more operations, systematizing some of our operations so that things are more efficient and we can use more of that administrator time for things other than keeping track and following processes that no one else knows. I think our administrative costs, though, are more like 28%. So now that includes principals when we say administration, not just central.
Thank you. This question has to do with AP classes. Do you support limiting the number of AP classes a student can take? If so, what should that number be? Or do you suppose, support eliminating AP classes in our high schools? For this question, Mr. Cabrera, you're first.
I support AP classes. Obviously, they can be a burden on the student if they're taking too many of them. So if we're talking about the number of AP classes you can take at a single time, that would make sense that it would be limited to a certain number, like, you know, two, three, something like that. But in the context of like over time, I think a student should be able to take as many AP classes as they can.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
I don't see any reason that we'd want to eliminate AP classes. You know, those are optional classes, and I think some students really aspire to learn those topics at a college level, and those courses are offered and I think heavily subscribed. So I think that's a choice that it makes a lot of sense to offer students that is in line with our values. In terms of limiting the number of AP classes, in general, I would say no. I think, you know, students and their families are the best judges, along with their counselors and their teachers, of what the right course load is for a given student. That said, there is a pernicious effect of an arms race that sometimes takes place at our high schools, where people feel that if one student takes five, then I can take six, and I can take seven, and I can take a course at Foothill, and I can take two courses at Foothill, and it goes on and on. And I think that, I've never seen any data that addressed that specifically, but I think that's a phenomenon that would make sense to look at, and in the context of looking at that, there might be a role for sensible limits.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza?
Thank you. As we know, AP classes in Palo Alto are heavily subscribed, and many students take many of them. I think that there are, some of our top universities are slowing down on accepting AP credit, and they have made statements to the effect of they don't want students piling on APs in high school just to come up and get the credits. They want them to be in high school when they're in high school, and they want them to be in college when they're in college. That being said, an AP is a great opportunity for a student who has a passion in a particular area or an interest or a strength to pursue that in more depth. And I think that that opportunity should be there for students. And I think our responsibility as a district is to make sure parents and families and students are informed about what an AP course will require, will be required of them. So I don't think there should be any hard limits on that. I think we should just make sure we're informing our families so they go in with open eyes knowing what the requirements are in an AP class.
Thank you. Ms. Caswell?
Yeah, I think that in a large school system, particularly one like ours, where people are looking for interesting, innovative challenges, we have to offer classes that challenge the students that want to be challenged. And when you have such a big district, it's hard to do that with teachers writing their own curriculum. So the AP curriculum does offer standard that allows you to get to the college level. Taking AP classes allows colleges to see that students are able to handle college-level work. And eligibility for many honors and merit scholarship programs at the university level are based on students having taken these kind of classes. I think it's important for students to be encouraged to have good conversations with their parents about what their workload is. And so putting some guidelines around, you have to have this conversation before you sign up for a class, I think is a good thing. But limiting AP classes when we have such a strong community? I'm not supportive of that.
Thank you. Ms. Emberling?
So we do have guidelines around limiting AP classes to two. And if a student would like to take more than that, they have to sit down with the counselor and with the parents and with the student and sign a form that says that they understand what the course load is. And it facilitates that conversation that we were talking about in terms of involvement and moving forward. These are highly subscribed, engaging courses, and I certainly don't support eliminating them. We had a student board member serve with us last year on the board who said they were some of the most engaging classes she was taking. They excited her, got her ready for college, and she couldn't imagine not being able to take them. So it would, we would have to have very long conversations if we ever wanted to talk about that.
Thank you. We often talk about wellness at the high schools. Shifting to elementary schools, what supports do you think we should put in place for kids who have challenges that would qualify them for special services, but because they can, some of them, easily master academic standards, they're not given adequate support, often resulting in social-emotional challenges later on? Mr. Collins, you're first for this question?
I guess to start, I would say this is a question that requires professional expertise that I wouldn't expect the board to have a really sound opinion on. If the board is giving a guidance on how social-emotional programs should be ruled out at elementary schools, I think we can do better than that. That said, from a policy and philosophy point of view, I think it's essential, the fact that a student has special needs but is nevertheless academically high-performing does not disqualify that student for the kind of special, the kind of supports that they need to be successful in school. In fact, it's the school's responsibility to provide those supports. My son is in a special needs program, and I see that every day, high-performing kids that have severe special needs and need to be properly supported. That includes at the elementary level, and it includes social-emotional disabilities and needs as well as physical and mental.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza?
Thank you. While I agree with Mr. Collins that a policy in this regard shouldn't necessarily be coming from the board, it should be something that the educators are figuring out. I think that best practices as to how to engage a wide variety of students are pretty clear, and knowing that we are providing opportunities in classrooms that meet children where they are cognitively, where they are emotionally, where they are physically, really engage more students. They cast a wider net in what we do. So no matter what students you have in your class, we want to be supporting teachers in providing curriculum and experience that allows for students of all different strengths and all different abilities to engage in a meaningful way in the curriculum, and to provide emotional supports along the way.
Thank you. Ms. Caswell.
This is an area that I think we need to be working on. And I need, I think we need to be working on it in a number of ways. And one of the reasons I believe we need to be working on it is, we had a group come in from Harvard last year, and they took a look at how we were doing special needs supports. And one of the things that came out of that report, and they're going to come back with a full report of recommendations on what we should be doing differently, but one of the things that came in was that we have a philosophy here of letting kids age, or sort of develop into being elementary school students. And that a lot of times means that they struggle a lot in the first couple of years. And rather than letting them fail in those first couple of years, the recommendation is that we put supports in right away. And supports are not just for the kid that can't read, they're also for the kid that can't socialize, or the kid that's having emotional issues. It's not just for the student that can't, you know, is having speech impediment issues, but it's for all the students, for the whole child.
Thank you. Ms. Amberling.
Sure. Another thing that we've done is, we've created a social-emotional learning committee that's working right now, and going to come back with recommendations in terms of how we address social-emotional needs of our students, from pre-K all the way through high school. We have recently completed Teachers College reading and writing workshops for all of our teachers, this training. This is the gold standard for literacy education. And in there, we're moving towards an inclusion model throughout our district, but particularly in our elementary schools, where we want to make sure we are moving towards universal design for learning, which means access for every student, no matter where they are. And some of the $13 million that we've added to our district over the last four years has gone to these support people. We have English language learner specialists, we have special need support, we have literacy specialists now at every elementary school. This is what makes the difference for differentiation in our classrooms.
Thank you. Mr. Cabrera.
Yeah, I think that the Palo Alto Unified School District and really all school districts should be in the business of supporting the unique experience and individuality of every single student. So in that context, my, you know, version and understanding of the idea of special needs really needs to be completely turned on its head. I mean, we're talking about, you know, the idea of qualification, you know, and applying. And I hear and talk to parents and teachers that it's, there's a huge process in that, and then once you get into that, then it's like, you know, you want to get out, and it becomes very complicated and administrative, when really, we want to have access and availability for any student to get the needs that they have to meet and excel in school, right? And we need to rethink the idea that, you know, one student is special needs, and then is always special needs? No, they may be special needs one year, and then another year, they don't need help anymore. It's really, they just need support. So I was, you know, had a little support in like, you know, second, third grade, you know, when I was a student, but I was not diagnosed with dyslexia until I was in college, right? And there was just no reason for that. That should have been easily avoidable, and there shouldn't be all that intimidation of students, you know, being, you know, labeled special needs. It should just be accessible to all students as the baseline of the unique support that we need to give.
Thank you. I know it's hard to believe, but this is the last question. Time flies. In the past couple of years, we've, our community has had several issues before the board, where the board has solicited community feedback in various ways, and ultimately has seemed to vote against those recommendations made by the community. As a candidate, what will drive your decisions? Ms. DeBrienza, you're first.
Thank you. Our school district is committed to community involvement. We ask all community members, parents, teachers, community members who don't have kids in the district, what they think about, what should happen in our schools, and that's important. And I think this comes down to a systems question. We have systems in place that we use to guide decisions, and if we trust our systems, then we should let them work. And if we don't trust our systems, then perhaps we should consider changing them. But right now, the systems are such that when we have a big decision to make, we often ask for guidance from the community. We ask teachers, we ask parents, we ask community members. And lately, there have been some times when the board has not gone with those recommendations, and they have that right to do. But I think this is part of the problem in our district. There are many people that feel frustrated, that their opinion is asked, or their work has been asked for, and they have not been listened to. So I think we need to really clarify why the systems we have in place are in place, and we need to really follow them and value all of the input from community.
Thank you. Ms. Caswell.
Yeah, you know, we have an unbelievably intense community and an unbelievably qualified community, and we're really lucky, because we have about $15,000 per student, and we expect to compete with districts that's in other states that can afford this, that spend $30,000 per student. And so we have to take advantage of the expertise in our community. It's really important. On the other hand, committees are formed to give advice, advice to staff and advice to the, to the board. And that advice needs to be well-considered, but it's not a rubber stamp. And we need to be clear about that when people get on committees and give us advice. We appreciate, and we need to be clear about our appreciation of their expertise. But if we want committees to be a rubber stamp, if that's what we want, then we probably shouldn't even bring those decisions to the board. So my focus going forward is to have the committees clear on what their role is.
Thank you. Ms. Amberling.
Yes, a clear charge for the committee is key. I think your question was ultimately, what drives the decision-making? And there are many components to that. The committees serve as advisors to us on, and we had the Minority Achievement Talent Development Advisory Committee just a few years ago. Well, they came up with 11 recommendations of how we can move forward with our district, and everybody wants those implemented right away. But each of those 11 recommendations takes time and energy to implement, and the big ship moves slowly. So I think there can be some frustration when, you know, we're all eager to make change right away, and it takes a while to go through the community process. So I think that's where some of that frustration comes in. But I think it's vital to have input from the community, and we do have so many, so much expertise in our community that we need to hear from before making decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Cabrera.
So I think the whole idea of having, you know, an advisory committee from the community is like part of the problem, right? So for me, though, I'm a populist candidate, and the point of being a representative is to represent your community and be the voice of the community. So in that context, you know, you do it good or bad, right? You make sure that you're bringing up what the community needs. So in the 21st century, every single board vote and decision needs to be up online. Everybody in the community should be able to vote directly on it through direct bureaucracy. And I'm also committed to participatory democracy, where every single week, anybody in the community can come and participate in live sessions and vote on issues directly as a community, and listen to each other. From there, I am 100% supportive of doing what the community wants to do as the people's representative, right? I don't know how much clearer I can make it, but the clearest I can do is that I will vote against my own goals in order to vote for the goals of the community. I mean, it's really that simple, so, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
To whoever the questioner was, or is, I feel your pain. I have served on many of these committees and seen my hard work and good recommendations summarily rejected by various boards. And you know what? That's okay. I think as Melissa said, that one of the, one of the biggest issues, I think, that most of those committees are not given a clear sense of what their role is, which is to be an input and advice to the board, or in some cases, the superintendent. And I think it's, when that is clear, you realize that you are not the final word on the subject, and despite the fact that you think you've figured it out, there may be other interests and other considerations that overrule what your, you and your group have come up with. That's certainly been the case in some of the recommendations that I've made. I do think we would do well to come up with a better, a clearer, not only charter, but process for committees. If you've ever served on these committees, they're wicked inefficient. I mean, they're really painful to serve on. And I think it takes a long time, and we don't always get clear output from them, and I think we could do much better if we, if we had clearer guidelines and clearer expectations.
Thank you very much. So that concludes the questions from the audience. Thank you all very much. I'm always sorry we can't get to all the questions. We are moving now to closing statements, which I said are going to be in reverse order from the opening statements. That means, Mr. Collins, you're first, and you each have one and a half minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Sigrid, and thanks again to the League. We have something really special in Palo Alto, we really do. It's been extraordinary living here for the last 12 years, and even more going around the last few months and meeting so many incredible people who care about the schools. You can't help but realize how lucky we are to live in this very special place. I do think there's a broad consensus we have in the community and among the candidates, and we've touched on many of the points this evening. We all want similar things, high student achievement for our own children and for every child, closing the minority achievement gap, reduce student stress, providing choices, since not everyone learns the same way or wants to learn the same thing. The real contrast among the candidates is in how we'd go about achieving that vision. To do anything at the level that we aspire to, it takes money. We've overspent, and we're using borrowed money and reserves to fund our schools today, and that puts everything we have at risk. The superintendent is already talking about limiting electives, eliminating smaller classes, and a hiring freeze on some teachers. And I'll be honest, I actually think there are hard choices in front of us. This isn't a fun message to deliver, and it doesn't make me popular, especially with some of my friends on the board and in the district office, but I think it's the truth. And we're all neighbors and adults, and we deserve the truth, not just on this issue, but on every issue. When we have the facts on the table, we can, we can sit down and figure out what we want to do about it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza.
Thank you. Thank you, Sigrid, and thank you, League of Women Voters and everyone for coming tonight. It's been a pleasure to talk about these important issues. We are really lucky. We live in a district where we have hard-working students, we have very involved parents and families, we have financially generous community members, and really hard-working teachers. We also have a challenge in PAUSD. We've got over 12,000 students. We are a unified school district, so we are trying to meet the needs of kids who are in pre-K, and kids who are seniors in high school, and everything in between. We have about 10% of our students qualify as having special needs. We have a significant achievement gap. We have a lot of hurdles to overcome, and we have a lot of work to do. I am an educator, and I look at all of my work through an educator's lens, and I think the board can really benefit from that. I've been working in systems for 15 years, and I've been working in all of those, in all of those jobs, at getting at the heart of what matters and why, what matters to the stakeholders and why it's important to them, so we can find common ground and work from there. The issues will change, but my approach will not. I will listen, I will use evidence to guide decisions, and I will work to find common ground. As a classroom teacher, I know how board policy affects the classroom, sometimes intended and sometimes not. And as a PhD in math education, I know how to look at data and research to help us guide to wise decisions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Cabrera.
Yeah, so I feel that we need to prioritize, you know, supporting and funding our students, our kids in this community. And, you know, yes, a minor mistake was made in the budgetary process, you know, the board is, you know, responsible for that, you know, let's get some new exciting energy into the board, some new ideas, you know, fix these problems. But I feel like we have the money in this community to increase the education, to support our educational programs and innovation to grow, you know, not to shrink. From there, you know, in terms of stress, I feel like the stress and the child wellness and safety is really a top priority and issue. And, you know, one thing I'd like to just, you know, add on that is that, you know, we're all to blame for this, you know, parents pressure their kids, you know, as a community in our society, we put more and more pressures on, on these kids. And so, you know, one component of that, which I hear, is that literally grades are online, like, on a weekly basis, right? I want to bring back the sacred relationship between your teacher and your student, right? You had a relationship the whole quarter, the whole semester, and then at the end, you know, you got your grade, and your parents found out afterwards. I mean, there is a relationship there, which is important, right? So, you know, in that context, you know, figuring out how we can continue to innovate, continue to really get new ideas into the board, I think is great. You know, we need someone who's not just talking about learning to learn, but also who looks outside of the box, that learning to unlearn and forget things is just as important. Our society has learned so much, and we get so stuck into these ways, that we're unable to fix the problems that we need to.
Thank you. Ms. Caswell.
Thank you for your time this evening. As our community embraces change ahead, I believe that I bring strong institutional memory and perspective. As I have said, we have a great district, but we can't sit on our laurels. We have a responsibility to provide continual improvement. I believe that I bring the strong listening and leadership skills, as well as strategic vision and institutional knowledge, to successfully balance the needs of all of our constituents in PAUSD. Some people have asked me why I'm running again. I had not originally planned to commit to a third term. However, with a fairly new superintendent, who comes from a state with a very different culture, and many, many district retirements over the last several years, I think that we are at a juncture in our history where we need to have a bridge in institutional knowledge. As your trustee, I've demonstrated my skills, experience, passion, depth, collaborative style, and institutional knowledge. I have made many hard trade-off decisions, and I will continue to use these skills and experience to protect and extend PAUSD's strength. I am here for all of our students and for all of you in the community, but I, and so I can't do it without you. You have three votes in the school board election, I ask for one of those votes. I look forward to being your elected representative and to carry on the profoundly important work that our schools much do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Amberling.
Thank you all for being here tonight, for the great questions. It's my priority to provide educational experiences that meet the diverse need of our students, focusing not only on academic achievement, but also on building skills that promote a healthy, balanced life. It's also my priority to focus on equity throughout our district. We want to provide safe and welcoming schools and access and opportunity for everyone, regardless of their gender identity, their ethnic background, their special needs, or their socioeconomic status. And it's my priority to continue to invest in our excellent teachers, who inspire, guide, and connect with our students every day. I want each year to be filled with joyful, purposeful learning, and for every student to be connected and engaged at school. As an educator and a child development specialist, as a parent of two kids in district schools, as an active community volunteer for the past decade, I'm uniquely positioned to understand the strengths and challenges of our district, and collaborate with our amazing teachers, staff, and families, to make a meaningful, positive impact on our students' experiences. Our superintendent always reminds us that students should leave high school with the same curiosity and joy of learning with which they began kindergarten, and I couldn't agree more. I take this as a great honor and responsibility to serve the community, and I hope you will allow me to continue this work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, now in closing, I'd first like to thank the candidates for caring enough about our district to run for office and to attend this forum, which I know is among many. I'd like to thank our cosponsors. And finally, I'd like to thank audience members. You've been very attentive, and you've asked great questions, and you followed all my rules from the beginning, so thank you. I do encourage you to stay to speak informally to the candidates. This room is open till nine, so you'll have some time. Outside the room, outside that door, is candidate information, and inside the door, at that table, is League of Women Voter information, some of which Bonnie held up earlier tonight. Remember to vote on November 8th. I've double-checked that date about 10 times, I didn't want to say the wrong date. And encourage your families, and take a friend with you to vote, you know, it truly matters. Thank you again for coming. Good night.[1755.83][1755.83]